Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting and Tuesday study session. It's Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. The time is exactly 12 noon. All members are present except for customers Krueger and Morrell, who are excused. We have a full study session agenda today. I'd like to ask the permission of the council to move to other business to get to our intern presentations today. Is there any objections to moving to other business for the purposes of hearing our intern presentations? We'll come back to the other business after we get to meet and listen to our intern presentation. So let's move there. Right, item 5A, and I am looking for our staff who are in the room to see who can kick this off for us. I don't know who to turn this over to. Come on up.
Is this thing on? Do I have to do something?
It is now. Good morning. Good afternoon.
All right. Well, thank you so much for having us all with you today. We really appreciate your time. My name is Carissa Hudson. I am an interns supervisor coordinator of this program. I'm also an HR specialist with the recruiting team for Pierce County. I've had the honor of supporting this year's intern cohort throughout the summer, and we are really excited to kind of share our experiences with you today. Our goal is to highlight our program and the benefits to the participants. The Pierce County Summer Internship Program started in 2016 with the support of you all in the council, those of you that were there in 2016, with just a couple of interns. So it has grown in both size and scope since then. As you can see, this year we have 10 amazing interns, and it's our largest cohort yet. And we continue to receive wonderful feedback from both the interns and the supervisors at the close of the program. We've even had interns stay on to continue to support their divisions after the internship, which plays directly to our goal of building pipelines for future employment. During COVID, much like the rest of the world, our program did take a brief pause, but that time allowed our team to make some adjustments and to try to align the program a little bit more closely with our DEI work. Just as an example, one of those revisions was that we removed the education pathway as a requirement for many of our internships, opening up the door to people who weren't enrolled in formal education. So how do we start this process each year? Each year, we ask our departments to apply. The application process allows us to ensure that our divisions have, A, a body of work that's meaningful, and B, a special project that our interns can focus on and contribute to throughout the summer. This year, we had 15 different divisions apply, which made our process of choosing departments just a little bit tricky, but we managed. So as you can see, we have 10 interns representing 10 different divisions across the county. Those divisions are PCTV, Parks and Recreation, Environmental Education, Sustainability Resources, Human Resources, Finance, Building and Code Enforcement, the Medical Examiners, Juvenile Court, and of course, the County Council. Throughout the program, the cohort has met weekly, and we've gone on different things like tours of campuses so that they can see firsthand the work, the diverse work happening across the county, and meet with subject matter experts who can describe the different roles within those departments and divisions. They've also attended different professional development workshops, such as resume writing and mock interviews. We had, what was it, 60, I think? About 60 different employees across the county sit in on those interviews. It was a huge collaborative effort and gave our interns just a real hands-on experience of what it's like to go out and interview for a position. Along the way, the supervisor, some of them who are with us today, have completed goal setting and evaluations with our interns. This really allows for them to have a focus and also some time set aside for coaching and encouragement of what those goals are, and offer some feedback as well. So our program is valuable in so many ways, as you guys will get to hear shortly from our interns themselves. One of the things that internships often provides people is with that real hands-on experience and hopefully an insight into what the future might look like. And so for us, that solidification of a career path is just a really huge part of it. The process can lead to somebody discovering their true passion, and they might find out that they're already on that path, and it might go in different ways where they realize, ooh, this is maybe not what I want to do for the rest of my life, and that is okay. We view any, any information that helps provide a future idea and career path for these young folks to be a success. So either way, if it solidifies that they're on the right path, if it leads to a change, that is, we consider that success. Over the past few months, this group of talented individuals have learned, they have grown, they have contributed to the real hands-on work at Pierce County. And at this point, I would like to invite them up to introduce themselves, and then we would like to share with you all a project that we've been working on. They have been working on specifically for many, many hours throughout this last season to provide you an insight into the work that they're doing. I would like to give a special shout out to Sydney, our PCTV intern, who has done huge amounts of work on this project as a part of her special project. But first up, our very own intern in Human Resources this year was Kimberly Trujillo. So I'd like to have her come up and just introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Trujillo. I'm a senior business management major at George Fox University. I'm from Puyallup, and I'm an intern for the Human Resources Department this summer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexa Potter, and I'm originally from New York City, but I now attend college and at Pitzer College in Southern California, where I study environmental analysis and gender studies. And this summer, I got the opportunity to work with the Environmental Education Team.
Hello, hello. My name is David Sully, and I'm from, I go, I study at Werwood University in Spokane, and had a wonderful opportunity to intern here at Udigan Code Enforcement up here up Pierce County, and I'm quite thankful. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gil Gepte. I just graduated from Western Washington University, majoring in urban planning and sustainable development, and I'm the Sustainable Transportation intern for Sustainable Resources.
Hello, my name is Hani Somera. I'm getting my master's in social work at Azusa Pacific University in California, but I live in Bothell, Washington, and I'm interning at the Juvenile Court in the dependency department.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Lynn, and I recently graduated from the UW Tacoma with a degree in economics and policy analysis. I am the Policy Research and Legal intern at the council. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelsey. I'm a senior at the University of Washington in Tacoma, studying biomedical sciences, and I'm the intern at the medical exam.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mason Happ, and I'm a senior at UW Tacoma, majoring in urban design, and I'm with Parks and Rec doing the Parks and Trails Planning Internship. Thank you for having me.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rebecca Higby. I am originally from Texas. I'm studying statistics with a math minor at Utah State University, and I am with the Finance and Performance Management Department, being a data analyst. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sydney Lewis. I'm from Puyallup, Washington, and I am a current senior at the University of Arizona, studying film and television production. And I had the joy of being the Pierce County Television intern. So my big project for this summer was to create a video about mine and the other interns' experiences, and that involved interviewing all of them and following them at their jobs and getting footage of them and bringing my camera on tours and other events that we did in order to capture the amazing essence of this internship. I'd love to show you that video, and I'll be happy to answer any questions once it's finished. Thank you.
I am Alexa Potter, and I am the Environmental Education intern.
My name is David Sully, and I'm interning here at Building and Code Enforcement.
I'm Kimberly Trujillo, and I'm an intern for the Human Resources Department.
Hi, my name is Hani Somera, and I'm interning at the Juvenile Court in the dependency department.
I'm Gil Gepte, and I'm a Sustainability Transportation intern.
My name is Kelsey, and I am the autopsy technical intern.
My name is Rebecca Higby. I am a data analyst intern for the Finance Department.
My name is Sydney Lewis, and I am the Pierce County Television intern.
Hello, my name is Mason Happ, and I am the Parks and Trails Planning intern.
My name is Karen Lynn. I am the intern for the Pierce County Council.
My day-to-day for my internship involves maintaining charts and graphs and data sets that have been uploaded to open Pierce County.
A day could start by researching different sites that I may be going to and lessons that would go well there, and then actually later that day, going to visit one of those sites and taking 360 images there.
I'm usually approving permits from people, people sending permits, sending different construction plans, construction site plans. On my site field, it's basically when I get to inspect.
I do engage community engagement and community events in Pierce County, and there I talk about the program we bring to the public and what we offer and other resources regarding sustainable transportation.
We'll go into the suite and do what we call processing. That's where we bring in the decedents that need to be examined for that day, and then we'll go back downstairs, and we'll get gowned up in all our gear, and we'll go in, and we just start working.
I will either do home visits or sit in on different meetings that they have and take notes for them, or I'll observe court and make sure that the advocates are up to date on things that are going on in their cases.
With my community outreach and career events, I typically just talk about the job opportunities we have to offer, kind of see their face light up that, you know, we have a place for them to work and grow their skills.
The first half of the week is usually council meetings, so I'll sit in during the meetings and kind of watch the legislative process, or I am holding informational meetings with individuals such as judges, attorneys, and nonpartisan staffs in the legislature office.
I've gotten to go out on shoots and help record footage and help with audio and kind of fully be involved in the creative process.
I'm out in the field. I'm going on site visits to different parks in the area, seeing how they could be developed.
My favorite part about the internship was the fact that I can engage the people and educate them about sustainable transportation that's happening in their county.
I've gotten to be an advocate for kids that might not be able to speak up for themselves, and I've gotten to be part of the process of parents getting their kids back, which has been very emotional, and it is definitely an impact that you can see.
On open Pierce County, I have created a little story with some data about our efforts to inform the public and keep ourselves accountable.
One of the first projects that I worked on was our Inside Pierce County pickleball video, and I was actually in that video.
Sydney, do you play pickleball at all?
I do.
You want to, you want to take on these two?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, well, there you go, Bruce. Sydney's going to join us to take on YouTube.
Largest success has been turning this project just from a mere idea my team had into a reality and getting to see it function and work on the website.
Mine was successful thing, just watching people, I guess, succeed in their construction plans and seeing their actually, what they want to build actually comes to, you know.
This internship has prepared me for the future by letting me see real-world data analytics, where I can clean up the data and I can get it in a format that I need to make those graphs and those charts.
I think it's given me a really good holistic view of how you can impact your personal community.
It provided me with the hands-on experience and kind of solidified that this is what I want to do.
This internship made me realize how much Pierce County has to offer to the community, and also allowed me to learn the different important functions of departments and divisions.
And I've learned a lot of new techniques that I wouldn't have had the opportunity to explore. Being able to come here and work with all different types of cameras and equipment really showed me kind of what I enjoy.
I really got to work on my problem solving, resourcefulness, and communication skills. And now I feel more confident going into whatever I may do next.
The intern cohort is all of the Pierce County interns for the summer, and it's been really incredible to be able to have that group together and be able to support each other.
I think it's a really good way for interns to feel comfortable during their internship process.
It's like we're growing together essentially, but in different departments.
You learn something, and you get really excited about it. You can go back and tell all your other interns, like, oh, look what I did. And then they come back and say, look what I did. And it's just really cool to hear, like, everyone's stories and what they're learning.
Really enjoyed getting to learn from other people's specialties and interests, and I feel like I'm leaving learning more than just environmental education.
Well, I do like the tours that we attend, and it's great to, like, see the other intern cohorts as well.
I love being part of the intern cohort. I view us as a family and as all friends, and we get to be interns together, and I like that support a lot.
Yeah, I would recommend interning with Pierce County because the stuff that I've heard from the other interns, what they've gained from it, what they've learned is, like, pretty invaluable. I think it'd be really hard to find it somewhere else.
You have the opportunity to engage with the county and the community to learn and grow your professional skills in a career field that you're potentially interested in.
I would definitely recommend this internship. It feels like we're giving back to the community in a way.
I think that it's a great way to network and to become more aware of the different parts of the community that we can impact.
I highly recommend this internship. It's so well-structured and purposeful, the way that it was managed.
This internship has allowed me to talk to people and really, like, ask questions about what goes into working in the public sector.
I would definitely recommend this internship because I have been exposed to new resources and opportunities that I didn't even know existed. It's amazing to have a paid internship and feel like you're, you know, getting compensated for the work that you're doing.
The employees are super nice. They're super inclusive, and they want to help you grow professionally.
But until you come here and experience for yourself, you won't really know how impactful it is.
I will bring what I've learned when I come back to work for Pierce County one day. Fingers crossed.
That is an awesome video, and it's, congratulations on producing that. Congratulations to all of you for participating in this really great program. We hope all of you think really seriously about joining the workforce here at Pierce County full-time. So congratulations. Thank you for introducing yourself. Thank you for spending your summers with us in this paid experience. One of the things observing up here and getting to watch all of you introduce yourself and watch that video, I think all of my colleagues saw the same thing, but we have a lot of your supervisors that were here, and they're all beaming. They're, we have like a little cheer section in the back over here, but they're, you can just tell they're very proud of the work that they, they got to see you do and mentor you through this summer. Just, just congratulations. Thank you for choosing this for yourself, for finding a professional opportunity, a paid professional opportunity for yourself this summer, and what you've got to learn. I'm sure you got to learn as much about what you don't want to do as what you do want to do. That's highly valuable. And if it wasn't shared, Karen, the Office of the Pierce County Council's intern will be presenting this Wednesday, tomorrow, oh, next Wednesday, thank you, next Wednesday. Don't come tomorrow. Next Wednesday, at the Select Committee on Homelessness, she'll be doing a presentation to the Select Committee on Homelessness. Tune in or come to council chambers if your schedule allows to witness that presentation from happen, in happening. Let me open it up to my colleagues to just to hear what other remarks council members might have or questions they might have. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for choosing this experience, and I don't know what other internships are like, but I just want to recognize the departments that worked with these youth, that worked with them, kind of in a lot of different pathways to guide them because you, you took on this additional task, and it wasn't just a job, it wasn't just a task, it was actually saying, hey, this is somebody who would come and make a difference in Pierce County, and we want to guide them and support them so that they leave with a really great experience. And whether they come back to work for Pierce County or some other government, really come back to Pierce County. But you've learned a wide variety of skills. You've learned how to work and navigate with colleagues in a real-world situation. It's not something you learn in school. It's not something that you learn in, as, I don't know, like a part-time employee position. Like, you really became part of a team that depended on each other and worked not only in the community, but with each other to support the, the community members that call Pierce County home. So just really want to thank you and the departments that took this on. It sounds like we actually might have to get a little competitive to get interns, so that could be a whole thing. We might have to step up our game to make sure we keep getting one in the council. So, William, you're on the hook for that one. So, but just thank you and congratulations, and best of luck on whatever your next steps are. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I too want to add my gratitude, again, not only for all of you for choosing to spend your time with Pierce County, but as Customer Hitchen said, to the, the intern supervisors who took on this responsibility, it is added responsibility, and you all have a lot of other important tasks going on that you're responsible for every day, but that you saw what a difference we could make by providing a valuable experience. It's really meaningful and a lot of extra work, and we're very grateful that you, that you said yes to that mentorship role and that supervision role to support a young person to get this really valuable experience. So, thank you again. Congratulations again. Look, there, there will be certificates from the Office of the County Council, from, from us coming to you to express our, our gratitude and helping to celebrate your, your many accomplishments this summer. And again, a special thank you to the Human Resources Team, who puts a lot of extra effort to coordinate this on behalf of everyone. So congratulations. We're going to move on. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our study session agenda, but you do not need to feel obliged to do so. Councilor Kitchen.
Can we do a photo, Chair?
Ah, do we, are we prepared to do that?
We're always prepared.
I was gonna say. Air always has his phone.
So will, will our Pierce County interns join us up here for a photo? If you want to file in here, we'll file in behind you. We'd love to take a photo with you. What a great idea.
He was listening.
We're always ready.
Always ready.
Yeah.
Wait, which one am I looking at?
I don't know.
Can I have the council member shift to my left or my right, your left? One, two, three, and one, two. Thank you.
Yay.
Good thing we spent so much time on picture posting.
Well done.
Good job, Brian.
Thank you for being prepared, Brian.
Thank you. Forty people on Zoom right now.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You got the fresh line.
Sully, hopefully we see back.
We're going to come back to item two on our agenda, review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long.
Great. Thank you, and good afternoon. It's hard to follow that, but this is this evening's council meeting agenda. It is a special meeting in District Three. It will be, it will take place at Camp Arnold in the gymnasium that's located in Eatonville, and the start time is 6:30. We did go over the consent agenda yesterday during study session, but I will note that an additional grant has been added, and Mr. Bokey can speak to that. He, I think he did briefly bring it up yesterday. And also related to the grants, I believe there is a map that council had requested that is now included in your packets related to one of those grants. If there are no questions on consent, I'll go right to the meat of the meeting, which is under Section 10. There are no proclamations, ordinances, or resolutions, but you have a number of presentations. So Councilmember Krueger will kick off the meeting with introductions. Then we will hear about Camp Arnold's success stories. Next is information and updates regarding Pioneer Farm Museum and O'Hawke Indian Village. We'll hear an Eatonville area update, and then the community forest introduction and overview. And then finally is the Vision 2050. And that is your agenda for tonight's special meeting out in Eatonville.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Are there any questions before we get to the Department of Ecology Grant Report? Not seeing any. Thank you. Mr. Bokey on the Department of Ecology Shoreline Master Plan Grant.
Thank you, Chair Mello Paul Bokey, council staff. You do have one additional grant, and I mentioned this yesterday. It came in Friday afternoon. There's also a map, and Planning Public Works is proposing a shoreline inventory and nearshore habitat assessment to update information and data from a 2003 study. So that would be 20 years, which is quite a long time. And the amount of the grant is $250,000. It is from the state of Washington, and you have been provided, if we could go a couple of slides down, a map, and the, I believe the portion that they're dealing with is in the red. So we have three individuals from Surface Water Management to go into more detail on this, Tom Cant, Angie Silva, and Angela Engo. To go first.
Thank you. Questions or comments about the grant request? First, your Campbell.
Yeah, if we could get the map back. The question about math, and I'm not. So this grant is to work on updates for all the red lines that drew all the shores, marine shorelines in Pierce County. I see Browns Point, Dash Point. So down towards the bottom, there's a long stretch, gray stretch that doesn't have a red line along it. Why, why would that not, I think, the one below, is that Ketrin Island? So why would the shore, the mainland shore there not have a red line along?
Not Pierce County?
Is that base?
So. Staff.
So we don't.
To that, but that is the base.
But we don't have any, we don't do any work along that shoreline. The base decides that shoreline.
Ms. Silva, do you want to answer the question about jurisdiction for the Shoreline Master Program?
Happy to, Mr. Chair, and great question, Councilmember Campbell. Shoreline Master Programs, which is the intent of the Ecology Competitive Grant, is to support local SMPs. Those do not have jurisdiction over federal lands, including tribal lands, and that includes JBLM in this example, sir.
Or cities, yeah. Okay, that's, I had a feeling that was the base. I just wasn't sure then if they do their own master planning along their development plan.
Yeah, part of military lands, they do have to comply with the NEPA standards, which is the federal version of SEPA, Environmental Review, and any alleged federal rules related to that, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Harrow.
The same exact question. It's already answered. Thank you.
Great. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. On that same map at the very bottom in the Nisqually Delta area, there was like squiggles of red. Are we, is that shoreline down there that we're also looking at? Or is it?
That is correct. Councilmember Hitchen, that's part of what is considered our marine shoreline as part of our SMP. Just for context, SMPs are required to look at marine shorelines, but also freshwater. For the purpose of this grant, again, we are zeroing in on the marine shorelines specifically.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I was seeing it correctly. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions about this grant request and its purpose? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Thank you, department staff, for being available to answer questions. This will be on this evening's consent agenda for approval for the department to move forward to applying for this grant to the Department of Ecology. That takes care of review of today's council meeting agenda. Again, we will be remote. There will be no remote option. There will be no hybrid option. We'll be in-person only at Camp Arnold, and we'll be out in the third district in Invaud at Camp Arnold. Looking forward to that. Item number three is external boards and commissions. Let me open it up to, I'm not going to call him Mr. Swanson unless he has something to report. Pierce County Regional Council has been on an August break, but, and I don't know that there's anything to really report for Pierce County Regional Council. So we're going to, Mr. Swanson, is that accurate?
Yes, they're both on hiatus for the summer, for August, and there's
Yes, they're both on hiatus for the summer for August and there's nothing to report.
Thank you. Do other members have other boards and commission updates? Yeah. Um, so the Pierce Transit Board met for its regular meeting yesterday in addition to reviewing the performance of the the CEO and renewing his contract for another year because of his very good performance. The big topic of discussion is about the Bus Rapid Transit Project and the future of the Bus Rapid Transit Project because of struggles in permitting the project, both with Washington State Department of Transportation along the non Tacoma section from Spanaway down Pacific Avenue to the city limits of Tacoma and permitting significant permitting struggles within the city of Tacoma and continued cost escalation related to to permitting the project. The 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 agency had to make a very difficult decision to put the current planning of the Bus Rapid Transit Project as we've been really thinking about it for some time on hold. It's it's not it 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 is truly on hold. We really believe that because of the growth coming to the region, we really need this kind of transit service to move people in this growing region. But for the reasons I stated before, it must be put on hold. It is unaffordable and not able to be permitted at this time until we do significantly more work with our partners at the city of Tacoma, Pierce County, and the Washington State Department of Transportation. The board did decide, however, to move forward with something that we're calling Enhanced Bus. Enhanced Bus will probably get a better name when the communications people are able to put their fingerprints on it. Right now it's called Enhanced Bus. It'll be an express bus type service that'll go from the the Spanaway Transit Center down Pacific Avenue connecting to Tacoma Dome Station. But twenty-minute frequency. And uh travel time savings will be about about a forty-minute travel time savings compared to the current Route One. So there'll be some of the features that you would have experienced with Bus Rapid Transit, like signal prioritization. So if the bus is sitting at a traffic light, there's a technology where the the bus skip, you know, can make that traffic light essentially turn green and make the traffic go with the with the bus in first position. As an example, those are the kinds of technologies that we're bringing onboard to that increases the travel time savings. There's some other treatments that are coming, but nowhere near all the treatments that were going to be expected to come online with Bus Rapid Transit to really make that, you know, a really convenient and comfortable experience and get all of the travel time savings we were expecting. But the agency is delivering something that we're calling Enhanced Bus that we can bring online and we anticipate we're fully planning on bringing it online in March of two thousand and twenty-four. So um that is the positive of it. We are bringing a service online that moves people through the corridor in a in a more convenient fashion. But I don't I'm not trying to downplay that we're not disappointed that we aren't able to deliver the Bus Rapid Transit Project at this time, but grateful that the agency has been able to figure out how to deliver a a good transit service by March of next year that will be a demonstrable improvement for people who who ride, who depend on transit service in that corridor. I'll forward a a press announcement that came out from the agency this morning because of the board's decision last night. I'll forward on an agency communication that came out. Make sure that everybody has that so that you can answer questions of constituents. And I believe the Economic Development Infrastructure Committee is hosting Pierce Transit soon for a Pierce Transit update, if I'm not mistaken. I think looking at a at a future.
I believe so. We've done some, we've redone some schedules this morning. Thought I could double check that, but we do find to have them come in and talk about their infrastructure needs.
So I'll pause there and see if anyone has any questions about our Pierce Transit report. Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Um, is the parking garage, the park and ride on two hundred and eighth-ish somewhere out there still going forward?
Very much. The Spanaway Transit Center. Act it's under active construction right now.
Okay. I wanted, because that's, I knew we hadn't groundbreaking. I hadn't been out there for a while and I was wanting to make sure that wasn't going away because that was one of the biggest things was people from the other side, like Meridian Side and people that live beyond two hundred and twenty-fourth and get in their car and drive. If they don't have a place to park, they just stay in their car. So if they have a place to park, they will get on a bus if it's going to be more rapid, hence rapid transit, but to say I'm disappointed is is putting it lightly, but I I actually appreciate that there's a plan B while we're in this waiting period. So thank you to the to the work of the board and Pierce Transit for not giving up and coming up with a, I guess, an interim solution would be a good way to hopefully look at this as we kind of figure out how we actually get this built.
Definitely thinking of it as an interim solution. Spanaway Transit Center does come online, it'll come online sometime in two thousand and twenty-four. We'll follow up at the exact date, but that's actively under construction. There will be some bus shelter improvements along the corridor, not as much as we were expecting with Bus Rapid Transit, but there will be some bus shelter improvements along the corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other external boards and commission updates from members? Not seeing any. Um, moving on to Chair's topics, briefly, I wanted to just share about two things. One, this morning I represented the council at the the canvassing board. The canvassing board certifies the election for the county along with the county auditor who chairs this and prosecuting attorney makes up the three-member canvassing board. And the the election was certified. All ten ballot measures passed, which was a really, really great accomplishment for Pierce County, including the one that this council was most involved in, at least, you know, administratively, which was the Sumner Library Capital Facilities levy with the Pierce County Library. So that and you know, all other nine ballot measures for emergency medical services and schools, all ten passed in the primary election. So that was really exciting. Some other things just of note, I'll pass this around. I I just find it you'll you'll find lots of nuggets of information that I think all of you find really interesting. The top five Dropbox users, the the top five well-used drop boxes in our county are the Pierce County Annex, Candle Park, a police substation in northwest Tacoma, the West Pierce Fire and Rescue District Headquarters Site, the Gig Harbor Library, and the fifth most used Dropbox is the Pulp Library. You, in this report, you'll see the usage of all the drop boxes. The average age of voter in Pierce County is age sixty. The primary election turnout was seems low to all of us who work in this civic space all day, every day was twenty-four point seven nine percent, the primary turnout. But if you look at the primaries going back to two thousand and seventeen, the primary turnout from this primary we just finished is the highest of any bet going back to two thousand and seventeen. So while low, it's higher than seventeen, odd number turnout, excuse, excuse me, odd numbered year turnout. It was the highest from seventeen, nineteen, and two thousand and twenty-one. The average age of a Pierce County voter right now is sixty in this in this primary. The average age of the voter challenge where their signature did not match, the average age of of a voter whose signature did not match is thirty-seven. Again, I continue to find that statistic interesting. I I think maybe it's an older person who's, you know, handwriting changes over time, whose signature won't match, and that's just not true. The average age is thirty-seven. It's a younger person who maybe doesn't sign things very often because they're digital all the time. Yeah, I mean, establish their signature.
By sixty, it does.
So lots of interesting stats here. Learn a lot by representing the the council at the canvassing board and I'll pass this around. If there's, you know, there's a lot of sort of jargon in here. If there's something that 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 doesn't make sense to you, I'll try to answer it as I sit through these as I sit through these meetings and begin to understand what this jargon means. Last thing I just wanted to note, you know, the county auditor continues to be praised by both political parties and independent folks who are active observers of the elections process. They're there during this canvassing process. They're there observing the entire process. They were there today at the canvassing board and representatives of the parties and independent folks all gave public comment praising the staff of the auditor's office for a very professional, transparent, well-run election. The auditor also noted today that eleven, you know, they they take this, they take the work of fair and transparent and accurate elections incredibly seriously. Part of that is making sure that the folks who are eligible to vote, vote, and those who are not eligible to vote, don't vote. Proof of that is they sent eleven cases to the deputy prejudice primary. They sent eleven cases to the deputy prosecuting attorney for voter fraud. So again, just proof positive that they take the work very seriously. These eleven cases, the early data is about people who live in another state, who are voting in another state and voting in Washington. And this isn't new. There's it's it's not an uptick. There's about this number of cases going back for at least the last decade or so. This is, it's not a spike or anything, so I'm not trying to I'm not trying to raise an alarm or anything. I'm just trying to report back that the auditor takes this very seriously and they refer cases as they come. This past election, there were eleven for voter fraud, and in these cases, it seems like it's someone who's registered and voted in another state and registered and voted in this state and in in Pierce County. Might be a snowbird, maybe they for just confused and and vote in a different place where they're also paying taxes and they're just legitimately confused on the compared to the two thousand and twenty-two election, there were sixteen cases referred to the deputy prosecuting attorney for for voter fraud. So again, just proof positive that the auditor runs incredibly well, accurate, professional, and transparent elections. I'll hand this around. The other thing I just wanted to mention under Chair's topics is the chief of staff is working with me to to plan two joint meetings. We were asked by both these bodies to engage in joint study sessions. These have been referenced in other settings, but I want to make sure we we share it here. The Port of Tacoma Commission has requested a joint meeting with the Pierce County Council. We're in the middle of planning that agenda and solidifying that date. The chief of staff can remind me if we have a specific. Thank you. September fifth is set for the Port of Tacoma Joint Meeting. We're actively working on fine tuning the agenda and the presentations for that. And then the other joint meeting is with the Tacoma City Council. Going back and forth on the date, we anticipate sometime in September. This is, this was a request that actually came from a meeting that Councilman Denson and I had back in the spring, actually. This has been some time in the works. It's a we're we're, we've been working on trying to nail down, have the right moment to have this where we could really have good conversation together. The the request for the joint study session with the Tacoma City Council and the Pierce County Council is focused on homelessness. So we can certainly update on the work of our select committee, the work of our comprehensive plan to end homelessness. And the city of Tacoma can certainly talk about their investments, their their plan on homelessness and all that. The the the, what we're really trying to drive to with that meeting is to have the policymakers talk to each other about this very significant topic in in our community and really have a focused conversation about what does a unified regional approach to homelessness look like? This council has had a little bit of a conversation about this, starting in our Health and Human Services Committee. This is a premier strategy in our comprehensive plan to end homelessness. So we've had some time to work with the consultants who have thought about this with us. Our Select Committee on Homelessness is really thinking about this. So we've had some time to think about the unified regional approach. I would characterize it as we're still very much in the early stages of figuring out what that is. What does that need to look like? How is it different than today's reality? So while we're still grappling with the detail, you know, the city of Tacoma is at much more of a starting place on that. And as the uni, as it, as a unified regional approach connotes, it needs to be a regional approach. It means we need our partners with us. It can't just be the county acting as a sole actor, right? So the again, the I I think that that is the main point of the of the joint meeting is to lead to actually having a early, early conversation with our peers at the Tacoma City Council, not when we have something fully baked in my mind and say, here, can you check the box on this? But early in the in in the discussions where we can have a a joint study session and joint dialogue about, okay, what what does regionalism like here? What do you need to get out of it for this to be acceptable to you and productive for you? Again, luckily, we have our select committee who's able to spend a lot more time on this, but I think it's going to be an important effort for us to be at the same table with the Tacoma City Council to have this conversation. That date has not been settled. Our chief of staff is actively working with her counterparts in Tacoma to find a date that will work for both bodies and coordinate the agenda. And the agenda will be much of what I just indicated. And if folks have other input, please let me know. But again, the main focus is driving to a actual discussion about unified regional approach to homelessness. What should that look like for us? Councilor Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mello. I a hundred percent agree with everything you said. I'm really looking forward to this. And I think when we meet with the Tacoma City Council, the more we can talk about budget, the better. I mean, I think if you follow the money, that's where you see where the priorities are. And if we're really going to work together instead of just reporting to each other on this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing, you know, the PowerPoint. At the end of the day, it's it's how we're actually collaborating. So I know it's a little early maybe to have some of those discussions, but let's just talk to them about as we're developing our budget and which is our work plan and the department's work plans ultimately. Let's see how we can combine efforts. If we're doing something and Tacoma is doing something similar, and this seems to happen a lot, why aren't we doing it together? One consulted or having one strategy, if there are ways that that we can do things together, I think that will really, really benefit us. Thank you.
Thank you. I know our chief of staff has heard that feedback and will continue to keep that in the mix as we fine tune the agenda. We'll be sure to get the agenda out to members so that we can get feedback. We, you know, we're expecting about ninety minutes of time. And again, really trying to reserve as much time for actual dialogue between the bodies and not just getting death by PowerPoint. But really carve out time to have conversation. But the conversation needs to be set up at the same time so we can have a productive conversation. So there's a, there's a balance here. Um, that's all I have for Chair's topics today. Under item five, under proclamation review, there is a Humane Society proclamation being brought forward by several members that's scheduled for next week. That is at the end of the packet for review. And then we have overdose awareness also scheduled for next week, Tuesday, the twenty-second, being brought forward by Councilmember Kitchen. The draft of that is at the end of the packet. And if you have feedback on the content, please get it to one of the members who are sponsoring. Is there any other business by members? Any other business by members? Not seeing any. Ms. Long, is there any other business for council?
Not today. Thank you.
Do you? We are due in Eatonville for a six thirty in district meeting. So I look forward to seeing everyone there and seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council on Tuesday, Tuesday study session. We are adjourned.